Paper.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ray Rothwell?
Rothwell, yes.
Rothwell.
Fake Christian Fellowship. That's who you're with, well, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Are we on come?
Yes.
All right. Good morning, welcome everyone to this February 27, 2017 commission meeting. Would you all rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance followed by prayer by Pastor Ray Rothwell.
You didn't call the roll.
Yeah, I'll do that in a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
I have a lot of ways to come to you for thanksgiving for this day. We thank you, God, for your love, grace, and mercy that you've extended to mankind. We also thank you for the abilities and talents that you have placed in individuals who might be able to play a role in life. We come today thanking you for this leadership team, the commissioners of Purple County. We thank you for their labor and love to the people in this community. We pray, God, that you would give them really godly wisdom, knowledge, and direction when it comes to decision-making for the citizens of Purple County. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Krista.
I know about you. Been around a long time. We started in Churchill. I'll make things end one, and I'll start at the feast.
We really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Connie, would you please call the roll?
I'm here.
I'm sort of here. One of those mornings, trust me. Everything I've done, I've done twice, so... All right. On the agenda today. We have public comments, approval minutes, approval vouchers, financial considerations, bid recommendations and awards, travel requests, meeting at 10 o'clock with developmental disabilities awareness month photos, and 11:15 budget commission monthly meeting. Connie, do you have any additional items at this time? Since we have no public, we'll go right into the approval of the minutes. Entertained motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to note receipt and approved by signing the generalization and note receipt of a CD recordation, both as the official minutes for the February 22, 2017 regular session meeting.
Discussion. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Creach?
Yes.
Your day.
Yes. Entertained motion to approve the vouchers.
Move to note receipt and consider approval by signing vouchers submitted by the county owner.
Second.
Discussion. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Your day.
Yes. Financial considerations. Entertained motion to approve resolution 176. Reference supplemental appropriations, DRETAC, treasure, $30,000.
Move to approve resolution 176.
Second.
Discussion. I did talk to Brenda on this, and this is, I guess, Katie's... The prosecutor's office have been behind on the foreclosures. And they're going to try to put 102 this year.
Wow.
Is what I was told. So... Connie, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Creach? Your day.
Yes. Entertained motion to approve resolution 177. Reference more obligations, various departments.
Move to approve resolution 177.
Second.
Discussion. Ball Library Resource Board, Loudie Office Machine, 17588, 911, OpDeVise, $129. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes. Entertained motion to approve resolution 184. Reference authorized payment, LEPC, $12,000.
Move to approve resolution 184.
Second.
Discussion. Connie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes. Bid recommendation and award. Entertained motion to note receipt of bid recommendation from the county engineer and further consider awarding the project as recommended. Reference 2017 small paving project engineer.
Move to note receipt of bid recommendation from the county engineer.
Second.
Dear board, after a thorough review of bids received for the 2017 small paving project, I recommend the bid be awarded to Brown Construction and Paving Corporation, Morrow, Ohio, at a bid price of $76,994.50. Connie, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Your day.
Yes. Travel request. Entertained motion to approve resolution 178. Kendra Buell, Christina Dale, TASK, have requested permission to attend the development relationships workshop training on March 16, 2017, in Hamilton, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $84.40. Resolution 179, Donna Simpson, juvenile court, requested permission to attend the reclaim subsidy grant training on March 10, 2017, Columbus, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $106.80. Resolution 180, Brad Kramer, land use management, has requested permission to attend the zoning and land conference held by Frost Brown Todd L.C. Firm in Westchester, Ohio, February 23, 2017. No cost to accounting. Resolution 181, Brad Kramer, land use management director, has requested permission to attend two public meetings to discuss standards on Platts and surveys, legal description, record plans, and condominium plans held by the McGovern County Auditor and Engineer in Dayton, Ohio, on February 28, and March 14, 2017, at no cost to accounting. Resolution 182, Jeanne Coltonback, JFS, has requested permission to attend the comprehensive case management employment program training throughout 2017, throughout Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $200. And resolution 183, Jeanne Coltonback, Regina Happner, JFS, have requested permission to attend the Central Ohio AGA Uniform Guidance Meeting, March 8, 2017, in Columbus, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $135.
Move to approve resolutions 178 through 183.
Second.
Discussion. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Your day.
Yes. Connie, do you have any additional items?
We did receive a letter from Locken Dream Water requesting we discuss our current leachate treatment. I am getting, you know, as you know, we went into a contract with them in 2010, so I am getting all the fiscal information from 2010 to present, as well as I can gather the leachate amounts off of the reports that are submitted to us monthly. So, once I get that information, I'll be setting up a meeting with Locken Dream Water for you.
We entered into that agreement for how many years?
Twenty.
So, we would be about... Six into it?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
We signed this agreement January 25, 2010.
Okay.
Did they say if there was anything specific they wanted to talk about?
I think, we're talking to David and also reading this letter, it does say it would benefit both parties concerned to have this meeting. So, I'm not certain what the benefit is, because I didn't spell it out here in the letter.
Okay.
In the conversation I had with them, is we're technically operating outside of our contract right now. So, we can, at times, operate outside of the contract, so the contract needs to be adjusted to where it's at more accurate, is my understanding.
Well, when I talked to David Friday, he just said it was a win for both sides. I'm not certain what that means.
I don't know what that means.
Okay. Guess we'll find out.
I think, you know, we're probably giving them more than what we've mentioned in here. I'm certain we have, because this spells out not to exceed 60,000 gallons per day.
Well, you have...
I'll have all the details before we leave.
And then, if you could have that information for us, so we could look at that, because I mean, if we, yeah, I'm not opposed to having a meeting with them, and I can tell you this, when we... When we did that contract, we were working under a lot of assumptions of previous history and things of that nature, so if there's something in there that needs to be taken care of, that's fine.
And then...
Hasn't leachate been down though?
Pardon?
Hasn't the leachate been down?
Last year, I think it was.
That was the first time, was probably last year.
Last year was the first year, I think. They said they don't have a problem handling that gallons, it's just worth exceeding the contract amount. Because I had to sit down with... She came in here, I can't think of her name right now, Ginger Adams. She sits on the board, the water board.
Oh, yeah, Ginger Adams is secretary.
Yeah.
Roger Riga, chairman, Dave Thomas, treasurer.
Okay, that's fine.
And then Wednesday, after we open bids for our... The Landville project, we will be inspecting two rentals, one on 127, starting at 2, and one on Camden Road, around 3:00, 3:15. So, we'll... See what... See what wants to be inspected.
Okay.
I do have a job question that we need to approve, and that would be for a social service supervisor one. Note receipt approved by signing, no, note receipt approved, a help wanted ad for a social service supervisor one.
So moved.
One second.
Discussion. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Next, I have another, please note receipts and approve a help wanted ad for a unit support worker one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Connie, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Then we have our... Our commissioners. I have to change something, I just noticed. You can review it, the letter for our commissioners, Paul, Dee, and Dave, for February 27.
Mm-hmm. Did you move it?
Pardon?
Did you move?
I did not change my letter. I probably had it done last Wednesday.
You moved the date you presented this day, didn't you?
There's no reason why. Anyways, I got, I have an incidence of charities listed, some vows, the River Commission, as well as Purple County Wheels on Wheels. We discussed the different levels that's been changed, which are also changed on the order forms attached. And I also mentioned the lodens available at Houston Woods. And the deadline to make those arrangements.
Okay.
So... I think everything's up to date, and we're ready to go out with it.
So, you've got several of these ready to give, so we can start signing?
Well...
In blue ink?
You want, I want to be sending about 100 out. Are you going to be, I mean, get them ready, so you can all originally sign them?
Jordan, do you want us to sign it in blue ink and then you copy?
Color copy.
That would be fun.
So...
Better write it legibly.
Yes, you must write it. I don't know if I know what you're doing, but I'd write one.
It's called print.
That'd be interesting.
It's called print.
I got trouble last year.
Mm-hmm.
But if you want to, go ahead and, I just have to change this front page of the dates for February 27. Everything else is okay. But, no, don't do that, though, because I have dates on every letter, every page, so that'll come with that.
We'll read through it here in a minute, see if there's any addition. What else you got for us, Connie?
I don't think, I think that's it. That's all I have. Other than passing out, passing out the updated for the new format of the jail work list. I think Rodney, I think he has, I think Bob had already got this together, but Rodney went down and was going to help him.
I wonder if you could actually do this through... Do facility due, within like your to-do list and prioritize, or if you have to run it two separate?
I'm sure you can.
I bet there's a way to do it.
Because you can break it up by departments, by buildings, by, I mean...
The way you're not running too many, that's a good start. If you could do it all in one program, it'd be less redundancy.
What?
Number 17.
That sounds like a personal problem that maybe the nurse should look at.
Yeah. Looking, you see it, though?
And I just wonder if the nurse, the nurse finds it a low priority for the toilet to be repaired in her station. This is a good start, I mean, that's...
They should be able to do this in facility due, by building or whatever that's set up, and there should be a prioritization in there somewhere. All right, what else you got, Connie?
From my understanding, they, it's more place than over the weekend. I'm not certain whether anybody stopped in to see, but... We were here for the majority of the day on Saturday, replacing more of the waterline pipe from the elevator room to or through the building maintenance supply, which supply at the ground, which probably underneath the prosecutor's office. And then they had from that point to the wall to do, and I believe it was Burley, Adam, and Bob that was here on Saturday. Did you stop by? Tell us.
They're fine.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
You got water today, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Awesome, Connie.
Rob, do you have anything?
Man, I don't.
Denise?
Well, did you two receive the email about the Southwestern Engineers and Commissioners meeting on the 9th?
I saw an email on it, but I have not had actually a chance to read it all. I've...
Okay, well, I just want to make sure you got the email.
I got it on my phone, but...
I haven't had a chance to check to see what responses I got. So, Paul Gruner has arranged for us to use the lab at Sinclair and get demonstration about drones, and there'll be a discussion about the practical applications. I kind of see it more of a use for the engineers, more so than the commissioners, but we actually get to go into their labs and play with drones and everything, so it's our meeting, the Southwest Engineers and...
Is that a Thursday?
It's the 9th. Yes, that is a Thursday. It's at lunchtime.
Is it that?
I did.
Oh, we got it from you?
Uh-huh.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah, I'm the president. Apparently, when you're the vice president, you step into the presidency automatically, which is, you know, so I'm the president of that group. Anyway, so there's the... There's a limit, seat limit of 30 people, so hopefully... Does that'll fill up quickly?
Say what?
I'm in leadership training that day.
I will have to go look at my computer, read it. Last night, my computer just started up there.
So, anyway, just want to bring that up, and then last night, I attended, Camden Church had a local, again, the Baptist Church had a local prayer meeting for all the churches in the community for heroin. Big turnout. Sheriff Simpson was there, Becky Sarr was there. It was a really big crowd, just trying to get us all on the same page and address, I mean, basically, we prayed for addicts and for their families, but to kind of get us on the same page as maybe to be able to work together with the churches to solve the problem, so... At least, I mean, I think it's going to be one of those that you have to help, you've got to take it by individual, individual basis, and you're, you know, the way you solve it is to fix it one person at a time, so, anyway, it was a very, very good turnout, and I was glad I was, glad I was there to represent the board, so... Anyway, that's all. That's all I have.
I attended yesterday, the day of carrying breakfast over at the... What church was it? One of them by the library, yes, UCC. One by the library, I couldn't remember. Very well attended. They had a very big crowd. They were, they were very pleased. Other than that, I don't have anything. We've got a 10 o'clock. Recess until 10 o'clock.
All right.
I'll go look at my emails.
Yeah, I need to...
If you want to look at the last page, I'm not making any bigger than that. Just put your glasses on. I custom made a compliment. I still have hair last week, I understand. I'm a bit burning. This is the way I wake up. I straightened it. I straightened it to get it straightened. Really? Yeah. This is what it looks like when I wash it. And I think I got 20 compliments last week, and I thought, okay, forget this, I'll just wait, I'm not straightening it.
Do we know where Mr. Creach is at?
Last time I saw him, he was walking down the building. No, my name is Karen. There you go.
Excellent.
Morning, morning.
Morning, morning.
How are y'all?
How are you? I'm sorry, how are you?
Hi.
It's natural. Yes.
Is Marty here?
No, he's not.
All right, so all ears.
Okay, this is the monthly financial report for January 2017. Oh, you guys, nothing's 2017, sorry.
I wish it was 2016.
Why is this 2017? Oh, no, we're here. Yeah, sorry.
You're right, you're wrong here.
17, sorry. Don't want to be 16, yes. During the month of January, general funds receipts totaled $759,925.52, and this is a little over a half percent. Sales tax revenue for January totaled $479.3926, and that was when the number sells. Local government fund came in at $34,693.20, charges for services $57,817.96. Interest was $1,043,394, fines and portages $21,6954, and other receipts $59,576.50. One mil conveyance totaled $15,270.10, and expenditures for the month was $22,000. January 2017, general fund disbursements totaled $952,717.72, and this was a little over a half percent, a little over six and a half percent of the estimate for the month. Salaries per Medicare disbursements was $537,415. Transfers for the month was $362, and that was to TASK. Department expenditures were $251,901.66, and that included supplies, equipment, charges for services, gas, travel, advertising, and printing, and other expenses. General fund began 2017 with cash balance of $4,781,000. General fund began twenty-seventeen with cash balance of four million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. And at the end of the month, January, was four million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Twenty-seventeen versus twenty-sixteen comparison. General fund receipts for January twenty-seventeen were below what they were in twenty-sixteen by, almost five, well, it's low, almost six percent. Five, five point three, two percent. Charges for services was below by twenty-nine thousand, seven oh nine, twenty-five. Sales tax was above, almost ten percent. Local government was below one point six five percent. Fines and forfeitures was below thirty-six percent. Interest came in fourteen thirty-three, ninety-four, again, every month. Casino tax for this quarter is low. It's one oh nine, six oh one, nineteen. And that is thirteen thousand, four twenty-eight, thirty-two less than what we received in twenty-sixteen. Expenditures for January were more than they were in twenty-sixteen by six point eighteen percent. Salaries per Medicare down almost fifteen percent. Department expenditures up twenty-nine percent. Or fifty-six thousand, nine, or seven thirty-three, thirty-three more spent. Second page, in the gray area to the left, cash balance as of one one. Four million, seven eighty-one, three eighty-five, seventy-three. Receipts came in seven fifty-nine, nine, twenty-five, fifty-two. Expenses was nine fifty-two, seven, seventeen, seventy-two, for a total of four million, five eighty-eight, five ninety-three, fifty-three. Down in the yellow in the corner, January's revenue for the one mil conveyance again was fifteen thousand, two seventy-ten. Expenses was twenty-two thousand. Over in the pink is your casino tax for the quarter, January, one oh nine, six oh one, nineteen. Your last page is just your copy of the comparison sheet for your records. Now, on your sales tax, you have a difference in what, twenty-nine thousand, three oh nine? Twenty-nine, let me see. Difference is twenty-five seventeen. Now, on your second page, you have that on your hand. Sales tax was down, yes. What? It's not down, is it? No, it's not down. It's up. There's a price up. So I haven't seen that yet. I haven't seen any, but this is still from November sales. Good November sales? So remember, it won't affect us till twenty-seventeen. The sales tax going down. Losing about five, five hundred to six hundred thousand this year on sales tax. A month, we did, okay, four hundred and twenty-nine. You won't see it as well as I see this in November or February, so January, so January's was two months behind. Two months behind.
You would see it like in March.
Probably in March, maybe.
So sales tax is always two months behind.
Mm-hmm. I'm reporting on November. I'm reporting on November. It's not like next month. It should be up, Christmas. So it just depends. And then January, up probably too, because not, you're not going to see the effect in January, because a lot of people were buying cars right after Christmas. So... Any other questions? Windows should sell it usually come in March, mid-March. Mid-March. Mid-March, make mid-office. Good number. Mid-March, mid-office. So the distribution will go out now to all of the entities and to the general public. What's that?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I got a thing when I was in CCO.
Can you say it to me? All right. I haven't heard that.
It's not issue, so it's a screw formula. They tried to explain it. And then they take in the county and the resources and, I mean, there's a whole, it's kind of like a local government formula. And sheriffs, and what they were trying to do was make a wealthy county get less money and more, and to more money. So I don't know how that happened, it was going to be made sold by nine years. And it was a formula, so, um... I don't know how it went out. Well, the kind of position was, why don't we just make counts hold for a year period? And so they had this formula, so we were like one point five, thirty years, we made more work, so we're getting more money. But we were getting more money, we would have lost. But, uh, Delaware County was getting like point two five for a year. That's huge.
Yes, tell that to me. You have something.
Yeah, I've got a whole, um, four papers.
We have a... They have to be out there, formula, they'll be able to go forward all the way.
So it's all there, we're supposed to have, there's one time payout. Anything else?
Anything else to say, Rodney?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, ladies.
Good to see y'all.
Connie, do you have any additional items?
Here's a correct, with my, with the correct date.
All the way through?
Ah! I wonder, is that not?
Isn't that, is the last page correct?
No.
Why don't you...
If I would have went to the second page, okay, I've got something else this year. Okay. Dumbass me. Anyway. I have, I received last week two annexations.
Oh, yeah. Sorry I laid them up there because of the picture.
That's okay. One, um, very early for seven point six seven two acres. This is Lewisburg.
And this is, uh, if you know where we stop at the parade, where Ake's building here. This is that point out here. If you drive straight west, and basically what they're doing is annexing everything in here. This was the existing property, our corporation line. So they're annexing these two parcels, or totals, seven point six seven two acres. Which basically, this is the existing corp line, and this is the existing corp line. So they're just adding this on to the outside of the village.
Okay. This is the second one. That's three point five.
And if you know where this is at, this is Brower's Junkyard. This is five oh three, so this is that point. If you were heading south into Lewisburg, this is, this is the road that would go straight, and this is five oh three. I did talk to Brad. Were you here?
No.
Okay. This, I couldn't figure this out to start with. This is the existing corporation line. And this little sliver was already annexed in. This was basically, it wasn't an island, because this is out of the village. But this was not annexed in with these properties. This was annexed in. There's a lift station here when they did this subdivision. That's why it was done then. And what they're doing, they're just cleaning this up, so that all these properties obviously have agreed to come into the village for whatever reason. It was, the corporation lines weren't marked clearly, so I had Brad come down and explain that to me. So this dotted line is actually the corporation, in the, is the corporation line. These are in, these are out. Like I said, they're just bringing these three lots in.
And they have, everyone's in agreement, the town's just in agreement, the village's in agreement. So I have two annexations that are expedited. Annexations, which of course are the deepest, quickest, days ago. I would like to send this information out to Steve, Steve, out to Kyle Crumbs, to our offices, review the above two reference annexation plats, back and seen completions, and find them in the form of letters. So I do have two resolutions and two annexations.
So basically, we have a annexation plat for seven point six seven two acres called Ewing, Lewisburg Western Road, for the village of Lewisburg. And we have an annexation plat for the village of Lewisburg that is located on North Main Street that are presented for expedited annexation.
Correct.
What are the resolutions?
I have resolution one eighty-six with seven point six seven two acres.
Move to approve resolution one eighty-six.
Second?
Discussion. Congress call the roll.
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
And resolution one eighty-five with three point five acres.
Move to approve resolution one eighty-five.
Say it.
Discussion. Congress please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Thought that would get pretty smooth out there. Didn't have to get a long way off.
I'm going to do the correct it the second time now, if you bad minds.
Okay.
Now it's on me.
Couldn't be distractions. I have the, uh, letter for the Commissioners Ball to go out to all of our previous participants dated for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. On all three pages. All four pages.
Connie, you're very thorough. That's coming for me.
And don't...
You're not thorough.
Don't forget to attach the, uh...
Your order form's there.
Well, it's not with this. I'm just saying, so... Entertain a motion to note receipt approved by signing the letter to go out to possible donors and attendees.
Sub move.
Second.
And discussion. Connie, thank you and the women out front there for getting it to put together. I know it's extra work, but this has turned out to be a pretty, pretty nice event, and we've gotten nothing but positive feedback on it, so thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Congress call the roll.
Commissioner Creach?
Yes.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes. Connie, do you have any additional items?
No, I do not.
Rodney?
Said it all earlier.
Denise?
Nope, I do not.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Pleasure.
What's this? Is this actually a letter?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I made a motion.
Just a second.
Yeah.
Congress call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Creach?
Yeah. I mean, I'm just putting my signature on it. I mean, I'm not trying to wrestle about.
Yes.